Today is November 26, 2012. This is the meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission. I will call it to order. And let's take a look at our minutes of our last meeting, which was on October 22. It feels like a long time ago. Does anybody have any comments?
Yeah, I think I have a typo. All the way at the end. That will be read. Ms. Philion distributed copies of the draft that will be read by the Select Board.
You sure that wasn't heard?
Either one, you pick.
I think it was supposed to be heard.
Okay.
I mean, yours makes more sense.
But it can be read.
I see red. Okay, anybody? Okay, so I hear a motion to approve that as changed.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second. Oh, sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes 4-0. Announcements, I suppose, even though you guys know this all, announced for the viewing audience, the town plan has been up at the Select Board for review for about a month and will continue to be reviewed for one to two months more. Liz and I, and Rod and Sue, and various other members of the Planning Commission, including Mr. Verzino, and I almost thought you called you Miss Cuff, for it's a... Can't imagine why. Miss Hunt, Timberly...
Yeah, I had the same reaction to both, which is so shocked.
Sue insulted.
He's got a very nice skin tone. So, and I think Carolina was also present at one of the meetings. We are running into some opposition to our plan over issues like how directive languages... There've been some issues with simple language issues that are easily remedied. There was about a whole meeting devoted to the removal of the 75,000 square foot economic plan.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand, sorry. And there will probably be a whole nother meeting devoted to land use. So if you're watching this, wondering what the heck is going on with the town plan, that is where it is. And of course, if you'd like to come speak about the town plan, the next Select Board meeting at which it will be discussed will be... Rod?
December 13, 5:30.
Yes, thank you, Sam.
December 13. Did you say 7:30?
Five thirty.
Oh, 5:30, okay.
And is there a date in January?
Not yet.
No.
And they say that they will not get to land use here, but I am skeptical, and I'm hopeful that they do. Even if they do, though, I think it's reasonable to expect that there will be another public meeting after that December 17 one.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. If you're with the plan, the 17... Oh, my gosh. So, even... It's important to note, though, that it's theoretically possible that could be the last meeting, and if they approve the plan, it will become the plan. So if you have something to say, you should go to that in any event. Any other announcements?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we have no public here, unfortunately, so we're not going to have any public comment. Oh gee, recap of the town plan public hearings. Already did that. I will note, just for the commissioners, in case you didn't come to the meetings where this was said, there were people who were not affiliated with us who came forward to say that the town plan was really good, and the Select Board has expressed its appreciation despite some of its criticism for our hard work. So, a reflection of what we and the staff have accomplished, even though I made it sound a bit gloomy there. It's the goal of the Commission that we get some work done while this plan is up, even if we have to get it back. And accordingly, the staff is getting ready to help us delve into rewriting the subdivision ordinances. So we're going to get a little training here, and then we're going to go over the regulations as they stand. So take it away, staff.
So we thought that, as part of a training, we'd run through with you how subdivision regulations came to be, because I think for Brattleboro, it shed some light on maybe what we need and what we want. So there's basically been four periods of subdivision regulations. The first set was prior to the 1920s, where, you know, they started recording subdivisions and doing surveys, just for clarity of records, to help sell property, for municipalities to assess the properties and collect taxes and that kind of thing. And so it was kind of in the 1920s that there was uniformity established in how you do surveys and boundaries and meets and bounds and that kind of thing. And then in 1928, the U.S. Department of Commerce passed the... They put forward the Standard Planning and Environmental Act. And basically, they used... In that act, they used subdivision regulations as a way to do comprehensive planning. So for urban areas that were really growing and kind of pushing on the boundaries, they could start using subdivision regulations to plan for streets and use it as a way to manage growth. They had... The Standard Planning and Environmental Act had a list of design features to consider. So some of the things that we see in subdivision regulations today, roads, utilities, firefighting, how to avoid congestion of population by establishing minimum width in the area of lots. And that... The model that they put forth gave towns the authority to approve, approve with conditions or disapprove of residential subdivisions. So it's a lot like the process that we see today. That's kind of all based on the SPEA. It is... It was not uniformly adopted at the time, but in fast-growing states it was. And so it wasn't actually until 1967 that Vermont authorized in statute land use regulations. So while this dates back to 1928, this wasn't happening in Vermont, because...
Nothing was.
We weren't fast-growing.
I wonder what the population of Vermont was in 1928?
I don't know, but there's a great book, Fast Lane on a Dirt Road...
Yeah, right.
...that kind of looks at a modern history of Vermont. You should check it out. Then after World War II, because there was so much growth going on outside of cities and in the suburbs, local governments were finding that they... That their existing systems were being taxed by all the growth. So, you know, the water and the sewer lines couldn't keep up, they needed to extend them. So then subdivision regulations took... They basically morphed so that there were provisions so that local governments could collect fees, so that, you know, if you needed new schools or you needed to extend the water in the sewer system, you could kind of capture some money back to help pay for the growth that was happening.
And when was 91 built?
This section of 91, I believe, was built in the late 1960s and early 1970s. And the last leg of 91 was Springfield, Massachusetts. I'll leave that up to your imagination as to why that might have been the case. Everything else from Canada to New Haven was done, just a wee bit.
Urban renewal.
I'm sure that's the term they used at the time, yep. That explains that little wiggle.
So post-World War II, you saw, you know, dedications of roads, parks, open spaces, school sites, that kind of thing. So then 1967, Vermont authorized these municipalities to kind of regulate land use, including subdivisions. And then in the 1970s, kind of the fourth phase of the subdivision, is that you had all the environmental laws being passed in the country. So now there was concern for the environmental effects of subdivisions. So stormwater runoff, water pollution, land clearing, overreliance of septic systems, I guess, in more suburban areas. So the regulations started to address stormwater and those kind of issues, erosion control, stuff like that. And then in the mid-1970s, I mean, this kind of still falls under the, all of a sudden, we're concerned more about the environment than just planning for growth. They started... There were attempts to find different approaches to the standard subdivisions. So you had performance-based approaches, clustering of subdivisions kind of started so that you could reduce the lot size. And then, kind of along that vein, in the early 1980s, that's when Randall Laurent came up with the conservation subdivision that we've been talking about. And it's generally used in rural settings. And then in the 1990s, kind of clustering, in the 1980s, 1990s, clustering and conservation subdivisions became more popular. So that's kind of the four phases. So first, it's just plating for, you know, to make transfers of land easier. And then it's actually as a growth management tool, but just looking at streets and utilities and firefighting. And then the next phase is, well, we've had this much growth, now we need to plan for schools and extensions to our water and sewer systems. And then you have the environmental approaches coming in in the 1970s. So that's the background. And if you've spent any time with our regulations, with our existing subdivision regulations, and two of you have been on the Development Review Board, you may recall that there's... There are things in there about dedicating open space and parks and that kind of thing. So you can see that we are working with an older model, I think.
Yeah.
That probably was based, you know, maybe some community based it on the SPEA and then worked over time.
I think it was modeled on language that assumed a rate of growth that arguably Brattleboro's never really witnessed, you know, the large-scale kind of metropolitan subdivisions. The only other comment that's interesting here is that Act 250 came about, I want to say in the mid-1970s, and it was the Chimney Hill subdivision in Wilmington, not too far from here, that was in fact the development trigger for the drafting of Act 250. And apparently, I don't know the entire details, but apparently there were enough problems with that subdivision, both from an... But mostly from an environmental standpoint, but other issues as well, that it was sort of the cause celebre that got Act 250 adopted in the legislature. And the original plan called for two pieces of legislation, Act 250, and I can't remember the name for the other one, it wasn't... So there's 248, there's 250, and there was another one that they numbered it, but it never went through. And that was supposed to address questions of economic development impact, you know, so that any proposed development needed to be measured in terms of its potential economic development benefit and cost. But that, for whatever reasons, was never adopted by the legislature and remains undone to this day. So there are many people, obviously much older than even me, that talk about that era and how that project is sort of incomplete for Vermont. But then, as you also probably know, for Vermont, Brattleboro is what they call a ten-acre town. So because we have zoning regulations, Act 250 cuts in at the point where either 10 acres or 10 units are proposed, and that gets an Act 250 review. If it's less than that, less than 10 acres of disturbance or just nine housing units, it doesn't trigger Act 250 review. If you're a town such as Guilford, it doesn't have zoning, then it's called a one-acre town, and Act 250 cuts in at anything over an acre of disturbance, or I can't remember the number of units, it's pretty small, too.
Guilford has no zoning?
No.
No. We don't say it like that anymore. We say, oh, Guilford doesn't have zoning. So we've learned, it's a profession. So that is an important kind of context, too, because in many ways, the Act 250 requirements have been the requirements that have made their way into various criteria in other ways. So sort of, it's a background for a whole lot of both case law and explicit requirements in regulations around subdivision.
So are there any subdivisions that are greater than nine units?
In Brattleboro?
Or anywhere?
Nothing, not recently.
No.
Well...
No, no, not in Brattleboro.
Not recently?
I mean...
Recently, like in the last 40 years.
To avoid triggering Act 250?
To Wilson's Woods?
I don't know.
There may have been some, a couple, but not very many. I would say...
That's pretty cool.
Yeah. I would say it's not really a barrier. It's not like you can tell that there's a whole lot of nine parcel, nine-acre subdivisions to avoid Act 250.
There was a bigger barrier, or there was a different way around it before, and they've closed that loophole. But if you were not creating a lot that was... I think it's 10 acres, it was...
It was the septic, you mean the septic, the one, the so-called shit-in-the-woods rule?
Yeah.
Sorry for that technical term.
I got coughed by him.
So if you had a 10.1-acre parcel, you didn't need to show how you're going to deal with human waste. If you had 9.9, you had to show a septic system or similar.
You had to get a permit for it, yeah.
Had to get a state permit. But 10.1, as I just said, you could go to the woods. And it was known statewide as the in-the-woods rule.
Why? Doesn't make any sense.
Because chances of stepping in, it was sort of magically reduced at 10.1. So...
That had a bad effect of creating a lot of long, narrow lots that were just over 10 acres.
What they call spaghetti lots. Right. So a farmer or somebody else would break up an 80-acre parcel into nine parcels that were each just over 10 acres. And then they'd all have frontage on the same road, so they'd be 200...
At the minimum.
They'd be, you know, the minimum parcel width, 200 feet or something crazy with a driveway, and then they'd just go sort of straight up the hill. And there was a lot of that form of development which neatly avoided the septic requirement. And so in the mid-2000s, that was identified as a contributing factor to sprawl, and the state changed that requirement and then imposed septic standards on smaller parcels, house much smaller.
Everything.
Everything.
Needs a permit.
Yeah, everything has a permit now. So there's no running away.
So if you were to look at a subdivision, you know, at a parcel map of a town, you'll often see the long, narrow lots, and that is a remnant of state permitting.
So can I... So I have a question. So I hear everything you guys are saying.
All of it?
Well, generally. You mentioned in the beginning announcements that the Select Board asked us to, I think you said, revisit the zoning, the subdivision zoning. What are their objections?
The Select Board?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I said that. If I did, I'm not sure I meant to.
Oh, okay.
I mean, part of our...
I thought we were doing this because the Select Board asked us to revisit this as part of our...
No, we haven't gotten that far yet.
The DRB did.
The DRB, since I started on this board a couple of years ago, or more...
I remember that meeting with the DRB.
Yeah. Have good saying this thing is obsolete.
Okay.
So it was my decision to sort of put it on...
So we're not doing this as part of Select Board review of the plan?
No.
We're doing this as DRB request?
Yeah.
And it's long overdue. And it wasn't our own thought that they need to be revamped.
Yep, okay.
But there was a member of the public at the Select Board meeting who didn't think that we should have zoning.
Yes.
We just shouldn't have it?
Yeah, that Vermont was better off before zoning.
That might be that 10.1 then.
Anyway, this is fairly organic from us.
And now that... And I do recall the meeting now, and I remember us asking that, what changes would you like to see?
So the background to why we're doing the training is, we just didn't want to assume anyone on the board had the historical background on why subdivisions have come about, on what the role of the law around subdivisions is, and then tried to just weave in some Vermont-specific material as a way of also explaining the process here, and as a way of also then being able to observe, you know, land use in Brattleboro and understand it in that context.
And I mean, I also think, when I was looking over the history, and you can see how ours, where ours probably came from, and how it maybe does or doesn't work for us, and, you know, what is it that we want to achieve in Brattleboro?
Right.
With subdivision regulations. I mean, I think we've heard a lot about, we care about the natural landscape, we want to protect that, so, you know, the environment is big. But then when you look at the growth that we've had, it's not very much, so does it... Do we need to be dealing with parks and, you know what?
Yeah, so built into our existing subdivision requirements are these things which seem to suggest that Brattleboro was growing like a town on the edge of...
Denver.
Denver, or at least Boston, or Hartford, Connecticut, or something, where you could see, you know, steady increases in the population, particularly of family, you know, young families with children, with schooling and open space needs and all that kind of stuff. And so built into the subdivision regulations are all these requirements that the developers are going to have to show on plan, provision for schools, stores, open space, those kinds of things, which in reality, for Brattleboro, have actually never come up. And so we don't... We don't... We want to have a discussion tonight about how much do we strip subdivision regulations down for Brattleboro so that they're relevant and pertinent, and what are the things that we want to keep, and what are things do we think we can let go of? And I think it's fair to say that if you operate with the assumption that the town plan's going to be adopted, and we're directing most of the growth to the north-south axis or maybe in special areas along the Route 9 corridor, even if you sort of did a build-out analysis for Brattleboro for the next 50 years, I don't think you'd trigger the need for a new elementary school, right? On the basis of our population increase from the last 50 years. So therefore, it seems a little odd to have mention of, you know, setting aside land for schools and so forth in the subdivision regulations. If we get to the point where, you know, we're overwhelmed with a population explosion such that we've refilled all the existing elementary schools and we think we need a new one, then we probably feel that coming. And it also... And I guess the key point here is, even by Northern New England standards, Brattleboro has a pretty slow and quiet development history, and we don't have any large-scale dominant developers. So we, you know, I think much of the language in the subdivision regulations as they exist now are assuming something like one individual development corporation or some similar entity was going to, you know, subdivide 250 parcels, and then within the space of five years, you'd have 250 homes, and in each home, you'd have three kids. I just don't think that is a plausible model. So dropping away those requirements seems to be something that we think is worth discussing, not necessarily just dropping, but at least discussing. And then the only other part about that is changing expectations or what the Planning Commission's sense of an appropriate level for establishing open space requirements and how that ought to be done. And then I think we could delve into some more technical issues. I think it's fair to say, a lot of the areas of town where you might expect subdivisions to take place in the future, maybe in areas where there are physical challenges, like steep slopes or wetlands or something. And so then mitigating the impact of development is an important thing to consider. And then the scale and size of things such as driveways and roads, and the identification of building envelopes on the individual parcels, might go some way to addressing the environmental impacts of development in the first place. And so those kinds of things, how do we encode those things, and at what point do they cut in, and are they everywhere, or to some areas, or how do we want to approach that? Would be the discussion, I think, that we're leading up to here.
What does the existing regulation say about sidewalks?
They're required.
They're required.
Everywhere. There's a new road going.
And it comes together as part of a package where all the roads must be built to town standards, and the town standards that are cited in the subdivision regulations are really old-fashioned. Like, they're not current... They're not the current state requirements for a town road, they're out of date. So the consequence is that the roads tend to be built bigger and sort of more heavy-duty than you might reasonably expect for certain subdivision settings, and it's certainly not a... There's no encouragement in the current regulations for a sort of a mixed-use type road network or sort of a low-impact road that's servicing just a small number of houses and...
And then would have lower speeds on it.
Yes.
I mean, that being said, I think when an applicant does request a waiver of the road standards, the DRB has granted it.
Yep.
Been open to it.
And if we had more of a range of those standards, then a waiver might not be necessary.
Right.
They pick from a menu.
Right.
And we might do somewhat better by encouraging, by showing less-impact examples, we might encourage developers to opt for that. Right now, it's a pretty serious road with granite curving and a sidewalk in a very traditional kind of setting.
Granite curve?
A sidewalk that also doesn't meet specs.
Right.
I mean, I like sidewalks.
Right.
I think they're important.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say...
But it gets waived all the time, because where the subdivision's happening is not in an area of town that has sidewalks, for the most part.
You'd have 200 feet of sidewalk and then several miles of nothing. Well, you set up this sort of problem of raised expectations and then increasing danger at the end of it, so it's all... It's a set of weird issues around. If you're going to do sidewalk, you should really mean to connect it to some, to another sidewalk. So did anyone have any... Anyone else have any questions about the sort of the history and background to the process here? And we've just sort of laid out, very quickly, just sort of a quick historical sketch. We don't know which town or where Brattleboro's subdivision regulations are based on. Ohio was popular because the, it's not a home rule state. And so there's some legislative similarities, or there were some legislative similarities between Ohio and us.
I mean, one thing that we had talked about with the DRB is that our subdivision regulations right now, you know, follow the process of sketch plan review, and then preliminary, and then final. I mean, that seemed to come out of that SPEA, but there's nothing in statute that requires that. So what you'll see later in what I sent you is, they didn't... They wanted the sketch plan removed, because they don't ever do it, so, you know, that's something that probably came from somewhere else and got stuck, but nobody was following it, so let's modify it. let's modify that.
I think it also referred to an earlier era of, to sort of go back to the process for an applicant now, if it's a reasonably large-scale subdivision application, it's gonna call for an Act 250 permit, or some fairly rigorous review and permitting at the state, maybe for stormwater and/or wastewater. So there's a level of preparation that's called for fairly early on by the developer to obtain other permits, which means that the sort of the looseness and literally the sort of the hand-drawn nature of the sketch plan is kind of a little dated, I'd say. I mean, they're starting with, they're starting with surveyed plans with a fair amount of detail from the outset. So this sort of very draft, drafty version of the subdivision. If that's gonna be discussed and reviewed, it's probably in the setting of the, of our department, so somebody would come in and say, "I've been thinking of buying this property, and I've been thinking that if I did, this is what I could do. What's your reaction?" And then we would sit and work through that with them in a very informal and fairly confidential way. And then that gives them enough feedback to then go on and do more due diligence with the seller and, you know, figure out where they're gonna come from. But that happens, you know, by the time they're before the DRB, they're already sort of compelled to have more information than the sketch plan calls for. So the sketch plan ends up being rolled into another, you know, the same meeting where more rigorous permitting is, is, uh, being applied for and they're being reviewed on something much more stringent than a sketch plan. So it just doesn't work, and I think part of it is with CAD and a whole bunch of other innovations, they're just not even spending that much time literally sitting around with a pencil and drawing, it's just not really what's happening anymore. So we don't see any kind of technical reason to, to.
Require it.
To require it.
Do you mean what you've written here in these draft regulations?
Yeah.
The conceptual consultation?
Yeah, they, yes, that would take the place of the sketch plan.
Yeah, exactly.
So if they wanted, if an applicant wanted to go to the DRB to discuss it, you know, if they had some preliminary stuff and was just trying to kind of gauge the board, engage the board in the development, see what their concerns might be, they had, would have that option to do it, but it would not be a requirement. Technically, right now it is a requirement.
Right.
Basically, if an application came in, I mean, ideally, they would have a pre-application conference with staff. Could change the name of that, just so that you could lay out the process for the applicant and, you know, go through the kind of the materials that they'd need to bring in and to submit. And that's done sometimes now, some of the developers will come and meet. We find it helpful. I think if you did that pre-application conference, then that would probably preclude the need to have, or to, to make use of the conceptual consultation, but that could happen as well. Um, but generally you would submit your application if you had all the required materials to the zoning administrator, and then he will classify it as a minor or a major subdivision.
Yeah, I think I've, I think I've asked this before, but when somebody submits a, a site plan, a sketch plan, whatever it is, to the DRB, what is the procedure for making sure that it is, um, the plan is executed? I mean, what's the regulation process? I just don't, I mean, we can sit here and make rules all day long, but hopefully they abide by it, but.
Is that this performance guarantee on page six?
Um, not really.
It's more of, um, I think the Article 5.
Yeah.
So, um, it's enforcement.
They're obligated to build the way they show it on plan, and where they differ, the obligation is on the applicant and the developer to recognize that the extent of the changes that they're making on the ground would trigger, would trigger the need for an amendment or a waiver of some kind of a requirement, so. You can't, a developer will always say, and engineers will always say, that you can't, you can't account for every obstacle that you're gonna encounter in a landscape, that, you know, you're there laying out your lots, or thinking that you're gonna lay out the road in a particular place, or whatever it is, and there's some weird physical feature, or some anomaly, or some problem that you encounter that just requires you to change something. And that even the best, you know, preparation and best research as to where everything should go and how it will come together always leaves this possibility that it's not gonna work out exactly like you planned.
Yeah, but you can get pretty close, and that flies in the face of engineers saying that they can build anything.
That's right. Remember I said that's what engineers and developers say?
Yes.
So, um, then they're under an obligation to actually inform the zoning administrator that they've got a problem, and what you now see in the landscape doesn't conform to the plan. And where it's a major, um, you know, where it's a major difference, they're obligated to have it recorded that, that they're making it changed. In other words, if it's major, it should require a meeting with the DRB again and ask them for an amendment, and then they have to explain why.
And then there's enforcement and penalties.
Right.
Look on the top of page nine.
Yeah.
Was the question?
Why don't you think that's gonna happen, though?
I, it just, it, it seems like there are, um, so for example, when I was on the DRB, even, even over the past two years, um, I realized that there's things that are gonna change, specifically budgetary issues, which means in the end that product probably isn't gonna be as good as whatever that site plan looks like. I mean, that, it's, if they're gonna cut something, it's, anyway.
Yeah, I mean.
So I, I guess it's just, I, I don't understand what the process is of, let's say that it doesn't look like that, whatever they submitted. But we, so the zoning administrator, they say, "Oh, hey, Brian, we actually, we took out four parking spots and we're just gonna."
No, they can't do, that would be, that would be a major violation.
Okay, well, forget parking, but like, we're gonna put, we're just gonna put an extra, um, 20,000 square feet of asphalt, whatever it is. I mean, I'm just, you know.
You usually don't get more.
Pish, pish.
So, so, well, if it's a site plan, which isn't what we're talking about tonight, and it's a commercial, most of them require a certificate of occupancy, so the zoning administrator goes out, will take the site plan out.
Right, verify the divisions.
I mean, the landscaping's always a tough one, because it doesn't take, or, you know, we tried to do some kind of performance bond to kind of make sure it takes and it stays. You know, sometimes people won't maintain, say, a landscaping thing, you know, if they don't maintain it, maybe it's gonna come back at some point for another permit, and they'll get, like, well, you're not in compliance, so you, you gotta fix that up too. Other times, you, you know, the zoning administrator could just be out doing enforcement, and it's like, there's a sign there, it's not supposed to be, it's not on the site plan, so then you start the, the process of trying to correct the violation. So it could be, "Hey, I saw this, you need to bring it into compliance," or "Come in and see me, get a permit, do whatever."
So it is Brian the person that regulates that?
Well, with that aspect, if it's, for instance, the road, the road part of a subdivision, at the point where they're cutting a road and then they're gonna build it to town standards, Public Works is obligated, and that's their enforcement, and they review the work as it's going on. So Public Works will visit the site, verify that it's in the right location, that the, if, um, if there are fire hydrants or whatever to be installed, that they're in the right, they're in a location as shown on plan and so forth. And then sometimes it's those minor things that end up being varied by, you know, five, 10 feet or whatever it is, and then and no one is made of that, and then ultimately what we would expect is that even with a subdivision, the so-called as-bills are submitted, and so you'd have the set of plans that you had that were used for the permitting process, and then you'd have the set of plans that actually showed the, and documenting the actual construction. And that gives another opportunity for the zoning administrator to identify any major problems and say, you know, "You're in violation instantly." We've not gone through that, um, in the time that I've been in the office. But I would say that the road infrastructure and water and sewer aspects are inspected by Public Works, and if it's fire hydrants, by the fire department. We don't verify or review the parcel boundaries that are shown on plan for a subdivision, because the surveyor provides a stamp, and so there's a check, there's an automatic check there.
Does he?
So there, I mean, what I'm trying to get is, there are not too many aspects of an actual subdivision where you should end up with a major divergence between, you know, what happens in the end and what's shown on plan, unless, and, and the obligation is on the developer and the professionals who are licensed professionals working for the developer, to actually identify that and come to the office and, and warn, and basically notify the zoning administrator that that's happened.
So is, is the problem, Timberly, that things don't get built to the original plan, and we as a community don't do much to stop that, we just sort of let it happen?
Well, I, I guess I'm just curious as to, and I, I, I mean, I've seen it happen on small scale, on a super-small scale, but on a larger scale, I just, I wanted to know what, who, who is responsible for making sure that it sort of conforms.
Right.
To the plan, and if it's, if there's a variation, and even if there's a variation, is there, you know, whatever records you guys have, somebody wants to buy the land, and you look at it, you're like, oh, well, this is the, you know, this isn't anything like what it actually is, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I can't foresee that happening very easily because of the way the deed has to be recorded in a town clerk's office. So, you know, that's an instance where the surveyor's basically placing their stamp on it, so if the surveyor who's working for the developer who then submits the subdivision and it's recorded in the land records, if the, if, if somebody then subsequently comes along and buys a parcel and it doesn't conform to the description in the, you know, land records, it's not, it's not something our office would be directly involved in. It would be a pretty big flip-out, we'd know about it, and I.
Mine, mate.
What's that?
My office, mate.
Yeah, yeah, I can think of some other people's offices that might, and I, you know, as much as, I, I, I don't foresee that happening very easily, and if there were, if it were, if it were to happen, there are legal remedies for that, that's a pretty serious mess. I'm not saying it's never happened and it couldn't happen, I'm just saying that there are, um, civil remedies available to the parties in that, and, in that instance, and insofar as the land record system works, people are under a pretty significant obligation to, to act honestly and to, you know, and to do their best effort at, you know, showing what's actually happening, um, which is not to say that it's perfect, but, um, and I, and so that's why I was breaking it out into each of the constituent parts, and the same thing goes for the road. So once you've measured, once you've measured where the road is gonna go and you've identified where the road's gonna go, that pins down exactly where the parcels are gonna be, so it's sort of, it fits together like a jigsaw puzzle. And if you get the parcels right, you should get the area for the road right, and if you get the road right, you should get the parcel frontage right, and if you get the frontage right, that only leaves you three other dimensions to mess up. It's pretty, but it gets harder and harder to mess something like that up, so it's just a way in which it comes together where those things are not so much the issue. I'd say what we would expect is, um, catchment basins being installed and, um, access wa, you know, access points where driveways meet the street, and, uh, if there's street trees or landscaping that's to be done, say if it's a cul-de-sac and there's kind of an area at the end of the, you know, a circle inside the cul-de-sac that's supposed to be landscaped, there are all these sort of small things that you can imagine just, um, don't get done. Um, and then ownership changes or whatever, and it just, it falls through the cracks. Don't think we've got a case where somebody says, "I'm gonna have a parcel that's a rectangle shape, and it's 200 feet wide and 400 feet long, and then all of a sudden it turns out to be a triangle shape," and it's just, that doesn't really, that's not the, that's not the problem that we're having, I don't think.
So that's more of a site plan issue?
Yeah.
And is there a way that those things can be front-loaded?
Uh, that's interesting, 'cause I think, I, I think the subdivision regulations are written as if they are front-loaded, and that there's a speed with which the transactions take place, so that if I'm the developer and I develop to make a parcel into, into 15 lots, within a space of four or five years, that each of those 15 lots is gonna be occupied by a home, and so therefore there's this sort of very brief period between me starting the process and the last person moving in, so any flaw or problem would be identified pretty quickly, and I'd still be around. In other words, culpable and, you know, somebody could get to me. But, um, the history of development in Brattleboro is such that you, you can, you can think of 20 to 30 years before a small subdivision of six or seven parcels is fully occupied, and the original developer could be dead by the time that gets completed, and then it is actually pretty difficult to find who's responsible for that error, if there is one, or whatever it is. And so, um, I think we don't explicitly front-load the site plan requirements, but that it is something, I mean, it is an aspect of the way development happens here that is problematic. Because I think everyone in the rest of the country pretty much assumes that it's a fairly quick process from creating parcels to them being occupied, and it's, that's not true in Brattleboro. And we've talked about this in the office a lot, obviously, but I don't think we've come up with a good way of wrapping the procedures around that problem, so I don't know if you can effectively front-load the site plan requirements, because the developer, of course, wants to sell the parcel to somebody else, and it's the, it's the, it's the subsequent owner that has the strong feelings about whether the house should be on the top of the hill or at the bottom of the hill, or all these kinds of personal preferences.
I think, I mean, I think we'd see building envelopes as a way.
As a way of addressing that.
To do that, um, you know, by kind of marking out where any structure could, is going to go.
Right.
But I think that that has to be a bit.
Right, and in a more typical suburban setting, you would, you would lay out the street, and you would lay out the sidewalk, and then because you're laying out the street and the sidewalk, you would actually identify the access points for each driveway, for each parcel. So then you would make the opening in the sidewalk, that would basically is the driveway, you know, the entrance to the driveway. So you're basically pre-establishing, this is where your driveway's gonna be, and so when the subsequent owner comes along and buys the home, that, they just accept that the driveway's gonna be on the extreme left-hand side, the extreme right-hand side, or right in the middle, or whatever it is, they just accept it because it's already there. But we have situations where we're making subdivisions on dirt roads where they've got extensive frontage, and there's no, you know, your driveway could be anywhere along 200 feet, and so, and it's the ultimate owner of the property's role to apply to Public Works to get an access permit. And under those conditions, so, you know, we could, we could make it that you have to get an access permit at the time of subdivision, and basically show, I mean, we, we could, we could force that decision early on, and that might help in terms of stormwater management and a whole bunch of other impacts that typically come from access decisions that are poorly, you know, poorly made, or made subsequent to the subdivision, but, I mean, that's one, I mean, I, that's just one aspect, you know, that, it's pretty, you know, there's not a, there's not a lot you can predetermine in the sort of settings that we're working in precisely because of that.
It's worth noting that if you do run afoul of these, what is it, $200 a day?
Hundred dollars.
For every day you're out of compliance.
Hundred dollars a day.
Hundred dollars. And at some point, the zoning administrator can get a court order to have whatever you've done undone, and I think it happened to a house, didn't it? Yeah, there was a house constructed where it didn't comply, and they said, "Well, the hell with you." And the zoning administrator said, "Well, the hell with your house," and the house lost.
It's, it's actually the town that ends up doing it, not, not the zoning administrator.
Sorry.
Yeah.
But you get the point, there is some.
Police power going to the police, actually.
And I suppose we could increase enforcement.
I think there's a statutory limit. I think it's in statute how much you can find per day, um, and we're at it. per day. Um and we're at it. Um
Sure.
Yeah. So
But it's difficult because every time you enforce
You'd like to take some of the pressure off the select board.
You get the legal
Get us some revenue.
Every little bit helps, that's right. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I mean, those, and so these are like tiny little things, like the question about when to do an access permit and who does an access permit and how best to do an access permit. I mean, typically, right now, that's in the hands of Public Works. And so we learn subs, you know, so in other words, a home, a property owner can approach Public Works and get an access permit. And they, and they don't approach our office at all, right? If there's a problem, we establish it later on, we go to Public Works and go, oh, yeah, they've got a permit, you know, we gave them a permit. They're like, oh, okay. Um, you know, they're the, they're the ones with expertise and they're the ones with the concern because it's typically, it's their role, right? Or at least they're responsible for making sure that things meet the standards that they have for access, you know, for access to roads. And it's their area of expertise. So we're okay with that. Um, we could, I mean, but it is one, I mean, it's just a handful of things like that. Where, and I think building envelopes is another one where we could actually stipulate um or actually better, you know, the way it would work is that the applicant would show where the building envelope is on the parcel. And the DRB would be in the business of approving that building envelope as part of the permit.
And so then when a homeowner comes in to build their house and they pull their permit,
They show them where
The zoning administrator is gonna look and say, is it where they're not designated building envelope? Yes, good, I'll issue the permit. No, uh
Right.
Then it opens up a can of worms.
Yeah. And, you know, you can have more than one building envelope shown for the parcel. I mean, I've seen typically sort of football-shaped obels that are sort of like a Venn diagram that kind of overlap. And the, the applicant or whoever it is has to choose one. And once you've chosen one, then that's it, all right? Um, and it resolves a bunch of issues as soon, you know, as soon as that takes place. So I think the long answer to your question is, we don't get the kind of massive disconnect between the way the plan is developed, the subdivisions, and the eventual outcome. Um, not on the scale that I think you might have been imagining. And there are tools there to identify a problem. And somewhat typically for Vermont, you know, most of the professionals that are involved in the process have got some form of certification and they have to stamp something or give an undertaking or certify that they're doing it, you know, according to statute and according to the law. And so it's their professional practice that's in question more than, than anything else, actually. And that, that's pretty much the way it is.
I don't know if you've had a chance to look through. I had given you a couple of articles that I had worked on for subdivision regulations. So the first is just enactment, authority, and purpose. It's just kind of the cover page. The, why are we doing what we do? When did it take effect? Authorization, authorization through statute. The second is the application procedures. And then the, the other article was the administration and enforcement. So maybe we can spend some time just going through the application procedures. So we have two types of subdivisions. There's the minor subdivision, well, basically, it starts off saying, you need a permit before you do anything, if you intend to undertake a subdivision. So any construction, building, development, you can't do any grading or land clearing, um, if it's associated with subdividing a lot.
What are we reading off of right now? This?
Page three.
Yep. Page three of the draft subdivision regulations that was included in the packet.
Yep. Okay. Um, with the DRB, we discussed having, we discussed having an exemption with, for a lot line adjustment. So you have two existing properties. They want to move the lot line, lot line, maybe, you know, one neighbor wants to put in a garage and they need a little bit more room to the setback. So they buy some of their neighbor's property and they just move the line between the two. Um, so if you were, currently, that has to go through the subdivision process. There's quite a few of those that go on every year. And we all agreed that it would be great to exempt it from going through the subdivision review. As long as it doesn't result in a non-conformity for either of the lots. Um, there is, we talked about having them in the same zoning district. I think we should talk about that one a little bit more.
Right. Are people clear as to why we'd want to have both parcels or subs, or or subsequent parcels in the same zoning district? There's not a problem?
Um, and then there was no new curb cuts were required. I'm not sure what, that was a request by one of the DRB members. I, to be honest, I'm not sure why. That's an issue.
No new curb cuts?
Yeah.
Just to be a minor?
Um, no, to, if it's a lot line adjustment, you can't be creating a new curb cut. And I'm not
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily identify that as a
So curb cut would be a new driveway?
And a new driveway requires an access permit from Public Works. But I don't know just because, say you, say you met every one of these criteria except D, I can't necess, I don't necessarily see why D would trigger it being dealt with in a more serious way that has to go before the board. So the trigger here is, if you meet um all three criteria and one A through D, then um you don't need a subdivision application. Well, what this really says is, if you're, if you're requiring a new curb cut to achieve your very, very small, you're breaking up a one parcel into two or three or something, then you're off, you need, you need to go off to the DRB and get a, get a subdivision permit. And I
Well, if we can't figure out a reason, let's get rid of it. I mean, does anybody feel we should have that for some reason?
Not sure what, who, I'm not sure which, I'm not sure what Tim's beef with it is. I don't know why he thinks that that's
He thought a curb cut would be signaling some sort of
Maybe some other intent.
Yeah. The one thing that's not in here is, and I'm not sure what the right terminology for it is, but sort of a long, if you're very crafty and you sit there for a really long time and you figure out how to do it, you could do this sort of under-the-radar level, no, no subdivision permit ever being pulled, but go from, you know, 20 acres to, I don't know, seven parcels or something and never, but I don't
Yeah, but this, because you're constant, that'd be tough to do.
Yeah, it would be really tough to do.
So does anybody have any problem getting rid of this curb cut? I mean, we can let a couple of people get out of going to the DRB on small adjustments?
Should we ask Tim? I, I remember him talking about that for a pretty long time.
Yeah, I mean, I could talk to him about it and try to understand it. I don't see
Clarification might be nice.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think the other thing I might want to say there is, if it's on an existing town street, say for instance, that you've got a corner lot and it's a big enough lot that you could subdivide it into two. And then you could, with the, with a second driveway, you could have two lots, buildable lots, and two driveways. Well, that seems to be okay, you know? Like, that doesn't seem to be like a really big deal. But if it's out in the middle of nowhere, sort of thing, I don't know, there might be, there might be a setting where the curb cut is the beginning of a subsequent subdivision further up the hill, right? Because the limit of, the limit of, um, the number of houses on a driveway is three, right? See what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I just, I'll try, I'll speak to Tim. I mean, I don't
Is that, is that what his thing is?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'm thinking that he's thinking that you could come before the zoning administrator and ask for a subdivision from two to three. And then subsequently build a driveway that would service one of the parcels
This is just a lot line adjustment.
Yes, I know.
It's not a sub, I mean
That's right. But then if you keep on doing it Right. I don't know.
Okay, so if we can't make sense of it, if it makes me, we'll act. How about that?
Well, so we should just flag it.
So one thing about the lot line adjustments is that you do need a zoning per, permit for it. So it's basically the zoning administrator is going to review the information. You will still need to file a plat, so it's going to need to be surveyed and, and all of that. It'll just be the zoning administrator reviewing it and issuing a zoning permit. And that way, people will know it has happened and
Yeah. So there'll be the big P, red P, there'll be public warnings, it'll be, you know, it'll be, so it might as well
Lot line adjustment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's intense.
Well, you know.
Is there, is there a min, minimum, maximum? I mean, like, if we're just moving it over to make the line straight or, you know?
It's, I mean, it's, for us, it's more of a record-keeping thing for the land, you know, issue a permit, it gets in the land records.
Right. For us, it's more documentation.
File the subdivision plat.
Didn't Tim mention if it was going to be a lot line adjustment of a certain amount of square feet, acres, however you measure it?
He may have. I don't see the need for that. I mean, if you're conforming, you're conforming.
Yeah.
I don't see the need to limit it. The ones that we've seen come through, I mean, there was probably five at least this summer. They're
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward. Not usually large land swaps. Um, and then there were two other exemptions that I found to be pretty common in Vermont. So if you're conveying a right-of-way or an easement, that doesn't result in a subdivision of land, so that doesn't require subdivision approval. Um, and then if you're leasing parcels for agricultural purposes, but you're not creating any new roads, then, or any new roads other than for the use of getting to that field or something like that, then that does not count as a subdivision. Um, so then we get into the procedure. So there's the pre-application conference that we talked about where an applicant could come and meet with staff. Oftentimes, some applicants will start calling around to the fire department or the Public Works to let them know what their plans are, to see what their concerns may be. So that kind of is covered under there as well. And then would be the conceptual consultation, if they wanted to do that before the DRB. So it would really just be the conceptual form of it, any drawings that they might have. And it would be limited to reviewing the basic concepts of the proposal, having the DRB review the proposal with regard to the town plan and zoning ordinance, local regulations, if there might be some confusion as to whether or not it would be classified as a minor or a major subdivision, that could be talked about with DRB. And then just giving guidance to the, to the applicant. And nothing about this would be binding. It would have to be at a meeting of the DRB. It would be, it would be posted, but there wouldn't be certified letters sent. Just kind of be regular public warning requirements. Does anybody have any questions?
We, yeah.
Can, um, if you do a conceptual consultation, can the DRB use information from that for their finding at a hearing?
That's a good question.
I don't believe so. Because it's not, it itself is not a hearing.
You might want to put something in there. I don't know. I would be kind of nervous about that.
Now DRB decision will be prepared or issued based upon a conceptual meeting?
Yeah, but, yeah, but if, if somebody wants to, if, if somebody needs to, if the DRB makes, makes a decision, then the developer wants to challenge it. He could use as, you know, quote-unquote, evidence in his challenge, something that was said in the consultation.
But it said right there that it's not binding. Because the idea is, it's probably at such a preliminary stage, it's just a chance to kind of talk about it with the DRB and, you know, assume that they're going to have to go back and do their work after.
I think, I think we're, we're talking about the difference between the intent of what this is and how it could be used if that intent was not
Nefarious purposes?
Thank you, yes.
For neither side.
I was just thinking people should be encouraged to be open in, in the conceptual consultation without having to worry that it's going to bias the DRB against them. You know, maybe you're doing an adult bookstore or something that's risky and, and you feel like you don't want to say what the use is at this conceptual consultation and it bites you in the butt later.
Well, aren't the caveats in section B sufficient?
Yeah, I
What's the downside of adding what James is asking for?
Well, first of all, we're not
In allowing it to be binding?
No, in
No, I
In allowing it to be free for discussion.
Yes, and not being able to use the minutes in the discussion
But there's no testimony taken.
I mean, you don't think it's written?
I realize that functionally, the same thing is going to happen no matter what it's said. I just, I imagine this from the perspective of an applicant. And I thought it might be reassuring to an applicant to allow them to bring forth whatever they might be sensitive about at the conceptual consultation. Um, you know, just so they feel comfortable sharing the whole deal.
Yeah, I think
I think that's already in there.
Yeah, I think that's expressed there. What I'd say is, if, if this says, no testimony regarding a potential application shall be taken and no findings shall be made, then really, in terms of the minutes, there'll be a record of the applicant coming before the board and the board discussing the application with them, merely as sort of a placeholder in the minutes. But the contents, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily even expect the questions asked by DRB members or the questions asked by the applicant to actually form part of the minutes. So there's, there's just this open
I understand that it's not actually going to happen. I understand that.
Right.
I'm just saying, I don't think an applicant, an applicant might not understand that.
Well, if an applicant doesn't understand what's written in section B, an applicant should have a land use attorney.
As much as I might support that, I, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say it's pretty plain English to me. There'll be no, basically, I read that and say, and conclude that there'll be no, that there'll be no detailed record of the exchange between the applicant and the DRB. So that's pretty much a free-for-all.
And in the paragraph above, it's such conceptual consultation shall be informal.
Yep.
All right.
I mean, other than holding his hand, I don't know what else you could say.
Or hypnotizing them and then snapping them out of it at the end, which I think would be preferred.
I would, I mean, what I would suggest is just something that says, nothing the applicant offers at the DRB in the conceptual consultation can be used by the DRB when
Well, that's what it says. The last sentence is, no DRB decision will be prepared or issued based upon a conceptual meeting.
I just want to read words so that they know what the applicant says.
Right.
If not
Okay.
So you said, nothing the applicant
Yeah, it's kind of like that.
What's that?
I said can't be used against him in a court of law.
I'd say, no, no facts or information offered by the applicant in the conceptual consultation will be, um, see now you're putting me on the spot and I can't do it. Um, will be used uh in a DRB decision on the property, on application.
And in doing this, what types of feedback do you think the DRB would be giving this person? I mean, are they giving them any feedback? Are they just saying, look at our project? I mean
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the implication of what you've just framed there, James, sort of pushes it a little bit harder in the other direction for me, which is, what we're trying to encourage here is a fairly free exchange between the applicant and the DRB, where there could be some pushback from the DRB and the applicant should be able to hear that.
Sure.
And then vice versa. And then the applicant goes away, probably, in an ideal world, will amend their application or take, you know, take, take some time to consider the, the comments made by the DRB. Now, from a strategic standpoint, they may kind of intuit that, wow, that idea of cutting down every tree didn't go so good, um, let's leave three, you know, um, or whatever it is. That's, if that's what they come away with as the lesson from, from the conceptual hearing, then that's then that's okay. And then if the DRB also gets the sense from the applicant that they're going to go, you know, all out and want to cut down every tree, then at the subsequent hearing, the DRB's going to be prepared for an application where the applicant is making an argument for cutting down every tree.
Sure, they'll ask on the record, "Are you going to cut down any tree?" And they'll say, you know, whatever.
Right. So I'm like, you know, there's extra protection for the applicant. I don't, look, I don't know, I don't know if I'd want to frame it in those two. I mean, I just think that, I think, I think the language as it sits now, I mean, it's not to say that it's perfect, but I think it, what it sets out to do is to say, it's informal, that there'll be no detailed record kept, that it's an exchange, it's a two, it's a dialogue between the applicant and the DRB to better establish preferences and understandings of what the expectations are and all those kinds of things. And the applicant won't be bound by anything that they say in that hearing and nor the DRB. So that, I, I, in a sense, I don't think you can offer much more protection for the applicant than that or encourage them to be more free with their information or their, or with their intentions. I don't know.
This isn't our only chance to look at this one.
No, no, I think we can just flag it or something.
Let's chop that for another...
Do we want to perfect that language sometime later, yeah?
Okay. So this next part only applies to major subdivision. A major subdivision is, it'll appear somewhere else, but it's basically, I think it's four lots or more.
Yeah.
Or the creation of a new street, creation or extension of a new street. So in this case, they need to come, they have to come before the board two times.
Wait, street is, if there's four more units, right? That's what you need to do.
Yeah, because...
Yeah, if there's an existing street and they're just, you know, subdividing the property right on the road front edge, that's minor.
Right.
But if it's...
If they're going to push the street in further, like up the hill or whatever, and make four more parcels, then that's major.
Is that defined somewhere?
Yeah.
It will be.
It will be.
Yeah, it's in the existing subdivision.
And it, and it matches up with the limit of the number of houses you can have on a driveway. So you can have a private driveway with up to three 911 addresses on it, you can't have four, right? So after that, it has to become a road or a street.
So in this case, they go for preliminary plan review and there's a whole set of warning requirements. So you submit the application, the zoning administrator basically determines whether or not the application is complete and then warns a public hearing for the next available meeting, which is generally the DRB meets once a month. And so we have application deadlines because we have to have it in the newspaper 15 days ahead of time and we need to send it certified mail to a butter, so, you know, there's a deadline that we post. At that point, the DRB has a public hearing, at least one, on the preliminary plan.
Before you get to that, there was a lot of talk when the DRB was visiting us about how the administrative officer determines that the application is complete. And whether or not they, that he could waive the things or...
The DRB is the only one that can do the waiver?
Well, it's like, if they, if they wanted it to be waived and Brian didn't waive it, they could ask the DRB and then, in essence, just come to the meeting anyway with something that the zoning officer said was not complete. Remember all that?
Yes.
What are we going to do about that?
Just sort of in a generic sense, say, say, I'm a property owner in Brattleboro and I apply for a zoning permit and it's something that the zoning administrator can administratively approve, so a shed in my backyard. And then Brian takes it upon himself to deny the application because either the application is incomplete or there's something else wrong with it. If I don't like Brian's decision, I have the automatic right of appeal to the DRB, to appeal his individual decision as a zoning administrator. And the DRB renders a decision, they either agree with Brian or they agree with me. In this instance, it's pretty much the same. If Brian deems the applicant, application to be incomplete and then hands it back and says, "You're not done yet, I can't accept it." They could turn around and instantly appeal that to the DRB and there they'd be making an argument that the requirement that Brian decided to provide some information or something at this point in time was irrelevant or unnecessary or redundant or something. And they'd have to be willing and able to make that argument. I think the problem that we have potentially is that the DRB will hear that and then go on to hear the application if they deem the...
How can they do that? Because they want to have the copies and they want to send it out?
That's right. That's right. And it's sort of a, you've collapsed two decisions into one. And so I think there, in terms of rules of procedure for the DRB, they shouldn't be able to hear a, an appeal to a zoning administrator's decision and the actual application on the same night.
Well, it could be warned, just in case. It would have to be warned. You have to warn it as two actions, but nobody's ever...
Done that.
Nobody's actually appealed. I mean, normally when Brian goes back and says, "I'd like more information," they submit it.
I, that doesn't sound like the case because Tim was saying that there were many instances where they just heard it and they heard the whole shebang.
Yes. Yeah, and what they say in effect is, "We're working on it right now," or, "Oh, you're right, we left that out or we missed that, we should have it ready by the time of the hearing." And they hand stuff out at the beginning of the hearing and then members of the board object because they're being submitted new information at the time of the hearing and expected to render a decision.
So sadly, I don't really remember this conversation. I think it was getting late, so I probably started zoning out.
Well, it seems to me that Brian should have the authority to do what he needs to do for the protection of the DRB.
Right. Was my summary right? No?
Another...
I have to respond to that because generally what happens is if there is an appeal, if Brian brings an appeal because the DRB, we get, get work in due time to look at it.
Right.
But to be able to reverse an appeal, you really should know why.
Right.
And that's part of what's in our package, but to just say, you know, what you come before, but if you come before us and without any information of why it's being, see, I don't understand where Tim's coming from.
I think there's a concern on...
I disagree with Tim on that, so...
Right, I think there's a concern on parts of the, I mean, and there's two of you that have been on the DRB, that you get handed out fresh information at the night of the hearing or something to enable you to make a decision.
Does that happen to you?
And it's a response to a request from the zoning administrator that, oh, you need this and you need that, and they go, okay.
I'd say that happens every other meeting or so. It happens pretty frequently.
Right.
I think, I'm a little bit confused because I think when you first started asking, Liz, it had to do with waiver and I was thinking waiver of application requirements. So just because it gets on the agenda, in my mind, doesn't mean that the DRB has, Brian doesn't have the authority to waive application requirements. So...
Right.
He can put it on the agenda and then maybe the DRB procedurally should take up the waiver requests.
He doesn't have the right to waive them. And then, so the applicant says, "Well, I'm not going to do it and I'll bring it, and I'll bring that waiver request to the DRB." And then they hear the whole thing.
Right.
And so, yeah, I agree, there should be some sort of stop, yeah.
It should be, you know, it's kind of like in the paperwork, there should be, what are you requesting waivers for and why? And in my mind, if that paperwork is completed or they've written a letter, sometimes we'll see it, "We're requesting a waiver of sidewalks because blah, blah, blah. We're requesting a waiver of streetlights because it's a rural area and it doesn't make sense." You know, if all that is there with the waiver request, in my mind, the zoning administrator should say, "Yet's complete, I'm going to schedule it on a DRB agenda." And then I think the DRB should take that up in the meeting and actually make a decision. Yep, we do agree.
Yeah, on each, on each, on each waiver as an item. Right, yes, your argument that it's in a rural area and streetlights are, you know, goofy, we agree.
Yes, so we're not going to require, we're going to explain...
Well, then, then it seems to me then that there's two, two types of waivers. One is that you have an explanation for about sidewalks in a rural area or something. And the other is, you just don't have...
The information, yeah.
Items that are on the list.
Yes.
Right. And in my mind, that's not being complete.
Right.
Right.
And so Brian's within his rights to...
Deny an application that it's incomplete.
To deny that application complete.
Right.
But then the applicant still can come forward and say, "I want to show it any..."
It's incomplete, that's right.
I mean, normally he won't deny the application, it's more of, "You don't have this, we really need it, I'm not going to schedule for this meeting."
But if he doesn't have the authority to hold it, then how does the applicant know that he really has to come up with the goods in a certain timeframe?
Yeah, I think, because Brian, that's what Brian's view is, that he doesn't really have the ability to say no because it's incomplete.
Well, then maybe we need a step for the DRB. I mean, it sounded to me like, it seemed to me like the zoning administrator was determining when it was ready to go on an agenda. But if there is a disconnect between the DRB and the ZA, then maybe the very first thing is the DRB in their hearing procedurally needs to determine if they've got enough information to...
Right.
Does that meet with what you guys have seen when you were on the DRB? Does that solve that problem?
I don't really recall seeing, dealing with this issue of completeness and even ruling on it, do you?
I think we hear about it after the fact, honestly.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe I'm not even aware that we're doing that.
Whenever that happens, it usually has to come before the board again anyway.
So before us because the paperwork was incomplete.
So what's that?
It's usually because the paperwork is maybe completed and it may not meet the requirements that Brian may have said, you know, like this, but not because the paperwork was filled out.
Well...
I mean, I've, I've never seen anything like that.
Let me make a suggestion. It may reflect the fact that I don't completely understand what's going on, but maybe it'll fix the problem. Maybe, and I, what I view the main problem, and if Steve is out there watching this, he's probably shaking his fist in agreement. The main problem, I think, for the DRB is that it's very difficult to render a decision fairly when you get information at the last minute.
Yes.
Because you end up reading it as the person's giving their testimony. And, you know, you don't want to look like an idiot if you missed something or they're saying, or that you're reading. And it's just frustrating. It's frustrating from the point of view of trying to make a vote on something.
Right.
And I think that the remedy to that might be not to kick things back another month, but to say, for instance, "You can't file anything further with your application less than seven days before a DRB hearing." And that gives someone a little bit of freedom to deal with the position the zoning administrator is taking. And you can say, "Well, if they file it, then the DRB can hear the whole thing. And if you don't file it, then the hearing on the substance of the application would be automatically continued and the DRB will only rule on whether the application's complete and ready for hearing. But if it is filed, then the DRB has the option of ruling on both."
Yeah.
And I feel myself getting into something that is complex and I'm not sure if I'm being clear and I'm trying to be very careful. Do you guys understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Does that make some sense?
I, I understand what you're saying and don't think it addresses Liz's question or concern.
Yeah, I don't know.
But it addresses another concern that I, you know, the DRB has had and I have had as well.
I think they, they mentioned that in the meeting, didn't they? That was one of the things they wanted to change, was to give them time to read these before they came up.
I feel like a bunch of things are swirling around here.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's, this is actually really, this is actually real, this is, this is a really good thing. Because if we can't sort this out, and I think we, we need to, I think there's more than one thing that needs to be sorted out here. And we need to think about it, not just for this, but also with the zoning ordinance as well. So it's something that we're going to have to get our heads around. Sue and I sit in the office and we get, you know, one, you know, one view of it. The proceedings of the DRB is a completely different thing, which we typically don't witness. We've seen plenty, but we don't see every one of them. The last thing that's going to sound like a tangent here, but I think is actually, would be really helpful is, in my experience, planning boards or DRBs such as this one do site visits. And so, and for whatever reason, Brattleboro's DRB historically does not. And I think it's sort of really interesting and I think partly it's to do with the history of the people who are on the board and their knowledge of the town and a whole bunch of other attributes. But I think this is one of those moments where if you're literally standing in the field and you're looking around and the applicant doesn't have a key piece of information or cannot point to the horizon and explain, you know, answer one of the DRB members' questions. So who does that belong to or is that where the road is going to go or why is it wet and mushy over there and that's not a wetland or, you know, all those sorts of very basic questions that DRB members can ask to better situate themselves vis-à-vis the application and do that really important thing of going from two dimensions on paper to three dimensions on the ground and then back again. That that's the virtue of the site visit. And really, if you scheduled site visits and had that as part of the process, particularly for something such as a subdivision, and then the applicant was still in a situation where they weren't providing, you know, crucial information, it's going to become pretty clear at the point of the site visit that you're missing something. And the DRB can, because that's still a hearing, the DRB can say, "You're going to have to turn up with this at the hear," you know, I...
But are you saying, are you saying, suggesting that they start with a site visit as opposed to, so the first, you open the first hearing with a site visit?
Yeah, procedurally, that's, I mean, I don't...
That's the way you're used to it.
Well...
Or you would just get, I mean, you would schedule a site visit and it, and that, that happens prior to...
Prior to the hearing.
Prior to the hearing.
I don't, I, I appreciate that. I just want, while I have this warm in my head, to ask one follow-up question.
Sure.
And Liz, answer this, whoever can answer this. Why wasn't I addressing what Liz brought up? And I don't, I don't mean that confrontation, I just, I'm not completely clear on this issue.
So you, do you want to address it, Liz, or do you?
Whoever can tell me.
So you were talking about getting last-minute information handed to you at a meeting and how it doesn't give the DRB enough time.
And that's only a part.
Well, okay. My intent was to also address when we could hear both the question of, is the application complete and the application? Does that respond to Liz?
Well...
Remind me of the issue that Liz brought up, I don't even...
Yeah, I may not understand it.
My, my, this was talked about quite a bit in our meeting and, and Brian was speaking as well, asked to answer the question because apparently he doesn't have the authority to grant a waiver. And so he, so when an application comes to him...
This is a waiver for any of the things you have to put in your application you're talking about.
A completeness.
A waiver to the completeness.
Waiver of completeness.
Right.
And so he can't make that determination, so he, his default position is it's not complete. And then the applicant can say, "Well, I'm going to go to the board." And so the applicant goes to the board with what Brian considers an incomplete application. And the board then says, "Okay, well, you're here, let's just hear the thing." And that's, in that case, then everybody doesn't have all the information or they get it at the last minute. So there needs to be a tightening of the control of Brian's authority to deem something complete or not.
Okay.
But my goal is...
I think we should use titles instead of names.
Okay, the zoning officer?
Yes, I understand, but just for clarity.
Sure.
See, the goal of my suggestion was to allow someone to get a hearing on their application when they've made that first appeal, if they're able to fill it out. If they're able to complete their application, if, if the zoning administrator says... If they're able to complete their application, if, if, if the zoning administrator says your application is incomplete
It's okay.
and they appeal it, and then they decide they want to complete it and have it heard, just as a matter of efficiency, if they give you notice and give you a document, I think you should be able to do that. But if you don't, then, if, then the DRB would be forced to punt on the application.
Well, I don't understand the aspect of you saying that, if they fill it out, they could fill out many forms, and it'd still not be complete.
If they complete it, I don't mean fill it out.
But-
But there's a difference of opinion-
But they have no way of knowing that, because Brian can't say, not complete.
The zoning officer.
Um-
Exactly, thank you.
He doesn't say it's not complete? I mean, isn't that what they're appealing for in the first place?
It never really happens as an appeal, I mean-
Right. What it say is, he does have the ability to just not accept the application on the day, or, you know, say, the deadline is noon on a Friday, you know, call them up or write to them on Monday morning, go review your application, it's missing items three, seven, nine, eleven, and fifteen from the-
They don't usually say it in the packet too, right? I would suggest-
Well, you could just identify-
Well, I think that's, that's exactly the problem, that why does the zoning officer have to suggest that this application is deficient in these ways? Isn't that a waste of the DRB's time? And if the zoning officer had more control, then, then you wouldn't have this deficient application to look at.
Yeah, so I think, I think what we need, maybe what we need to do here is, is to sort of make the lines, you know, delineate the lines of authority a little bit more carefully, or do the division of labor a little bit more carefully. So, let's sort of take Brian out of it. Theoretically, if the zoning administrator concludes on a Friday afternoon or a Monday morning that the application is incomplete, they should be encouraged not to put that in the warning and on the agenda for the subsequent DRB meeting, and contact the applicant and say, you didn't make the cut for, for the agenda, because you're missing all these things. And there's no letter or other communication indicating that you've, that you're conscious that you are missing these things, but that you've got good reason for it. You know, in other words, I'm not submitting this plan because I don't propose to do that, or I'm not proposing a lighting plan for the streetlights, because I'm not having any streetlights. I mean, there's a way in which you could go through every, every item and account for why you haven't included something. Then Brian would reach the conclusion that it's complete, because at least you've addressed every issue, and you've got a reason why you haven't complied. And the DRB can hear that and go, we don't care that you don't think it's necessary, we still do, back you go, we'll continue it. But what's happening now is some version of kind of both, where he's like, seems to be missing some stuff, but I'll let them know, and bang it on the agenda anyway, and give them some time to get ready, and then they turn up and they're going, oh, here's some more things for you to look at. And you're all sitting there going, what?
That's when the seven days come into play, right?
Yes.
Right. And that's James's seven days rule. So, my solution was, you book a site visit seven days before the hearing, in which case there's face-to-face interaction with the applicant, and you're going, hey, doofus, where's this, and this, and this, because I don't know what the hell I'm looking at here, and if you want me to give you a decision, two weeks from now, or a week from now, I'm going to need it, so where, where's it at? And that'll be like, ooh. So, there's a couple of different modes to get at this. And so, one of the things, you, you know, one of the things that we want to get clear is, giving the zoning administrator the authority to just sort of call or email or let the person know that they didn't meet the cut, so then that's why you're not on the agenda. The other way of doing it is to sort of schedule a site visit, and go over with the applicant basically, the material of their, of their application, and make it very clear that there still seem to be some things missing, and then they could still be encouraged to seek a continuance, you know, or, you know, defer their application to a subsequent date because they realize they need to do more work, or whatever it is, or some other version that James was, was outlining, which is, if you can't show why and how your complete is, your packet is complete, and get everything to the DRB seven days before the hearing, you're off.
But if, if it, if the site visit is seven days before the hearing, and then he, this person realizes that he has to-
Yeah, I mean, there might be, I mean, there were just two different approaches, but the timing might need to be adjusted, but, I mean, what I would say here-
And they're not mutually exclusive.
They're not mutually exclusive, they could, they could be self-reinforcing.
It seems to me that, that the zoning administrator having that authority is a good thing, no matter what happens down the line.
Yep.
And it'll help the applicants too.
Right. So I think, without wanting to sort of, I think this is an important discussion to have, what we probably need to do is go back to statute, and go back to the ordinance, and figure out exactly where those lines of authority are, so that we're not making stuff up about what Brian can do, or what he cannot do, and then get back-
The zoning officer.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And the zoning administrator often says-
Who will always be called Brian.
Yes.
We're going to put him on the ordinance, they're just going to be called Brian, doesn't matter. Doesn't, you know, because it'll be the life of Brian then, it'll be great.
The ZA often
Brian.
does sit in the chair
Right.
of the DRB to kind of review completeness as well, so.
Right. There's a lot of Bryans around too.
And the same thing would happen under section 2.5, under final.
Yes.
So whatever we figure out for the one-
Right, so what do we get sorted out for this?
There might be a, a-
Yes.
-different permutation or the same
Yep.
Yeah, latter.
Right.
Yeah.
So are there more things we should be discussing? I feel like we're spending a lot of time on this one issue.
Um, we actually, uh-
Maybe not, I just-
The one-
I'm imagining the last select board meeting where we spent all of our time, in the first one, on the 65,000-foot square, square foot economic-
I was just disappointed.
Is it that bad?
I was just disappointed that, yeah.
Is this really that bad?
No, I was just-
No, but I just, you know-
Were you there?
I know the plan, and they don't, and I know that there's this huge plan, but they don't. And I'm just thinking, you know, you guys probably-
Are there other things that we should focus on?
How did you feel about the grammar?
Well, on page six, I think there's a line missing
I don't know.
on section 2.9A.
I was just joking.
Yeah.
We shouldn't joke.
Okay.
We shouldn't joke.
You think there's a line missing?
Until the town plan gets passed, but-
Okay.
Don't want any hurt feelings involved in any of this.
Okay. So, actually, just above that, and we'll address that grammar issue there, but performance One of the kind of challenges that we have here gets back to the, sort of, the scale of development that we have, and the, um, the funny kind of odd setting where the person that often, or the developer that often initiates the subdivision development is not the one that is around, that entity is not the one around at the end. So, in other words, the project itself changes ownership over the course of years, frequently, three or four times. So the intentions of the original applicant are very difficult to convey, and maintain, and sustain all the way through to the end. And then some funny things can happen, misunderstandings, and designations for, of, of one parcel to be used in a particular way for one thing, get used for another, and, and various issues such as that. And then, things like the completion of the road, and any kind of landscaping, or any of those kinds of requirements, such as, um, street trees, those kinds of things, can be things that kind of get left off or forgotten about, or, or not well done. Or the ownership of the road, for instance, it might start off as a private road, and then in the process of the subdivision being sold on, the private road might become overnight a public road, because of some kind of weird aspect of the transaction of the land, that is the parcels. So, what we've attempted to do is, um, do a couple of different things here. The other part of what we tend to have happen here is that, when a developer engages in a PUD, or a PRD, or a large-ish subdivision in this town, they frequently draft a development agreement, and have the select board and the developer sign a development agreement that spells out the responsibility of both parties for various things, such as the road, or, or, you know, somebody's going to be responsible for doing something first, and then the town will follow, or the town will do something first, and then the developer will follow, these sorts of, you know, sequencing things and so forth. And again, the problem there is, if the ownership of the parcel, or the, the project changes three or four times, the development agreement is being struck between this legal entity that starts the project, and the town, and then, that's still enforced, but in this weird way, because the subsequent owner wasn't involved in negotiating the development agreement, and they're like, it's not with me, I'm not, that's not me, I'm not-
So that was, that was Timberley's issue.
Right. I'm not, you know, Super Wombat LLC, I'm somebody else, so, it's not binding on me, you know? Um, so, you get this sort of-
So, is this performance guarantee new?
It's, yeah, it's not a new concept.
It's new for Bratton.
No, no, no.
It's new for Bratton Bros.
New for Bratton Bros.
Right.
Well, I think that's great.
And so, what we're trying to do here is a couple of different things. We're trying to get the conditions of the develop, of the land development to be articulated by the DRB in their decision. And the requirement that the property owner, the developer, meet those conditions, be contained within the language that goes along with the performance guarantee. So, I will plant street trees and make sure they're still alive three years later. I will seal the road once, um, the last house is constructed. I will, you know, restock the pond with fish for four years, I will do all these things, you know? And, um, I will offer a surety or a bond against the possibility that I reneg on these things, and then the town can pull it, and therefore cover it, and do it themselves. So, the challenge that we've had with the DRB so far is, um, literally estimating the value of that work. Like, if we want to have a surety for landscaping, is 50% of the value of the landscaping enough? And then how do you calculate the value of the landscaping work, and those kinds of things?
Well, don't you get an engineer to estimate it?
We don't. But, I mean, the applicant could, I mean, it could be a requirement that the applicant show.
It would be the way.
Right.
Couldn't you get your own engineer, rather than the applicant's engineer?
That would be nuts.
We could.
We could. And have each, and have them pay for it.
I mean, that's what they do in states other than Vermont.
I know.
I, I think that, I think that this performance guarantee section, I mean, I guess what this is leading to
Yes.
is probably a bigger conversation
Bigger discussion, yeah.
with the select board, and
Yeah.
probably the town attorney.
So-
Because this is new and different, we think it provides better protection to the town.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, it's just that front-loading thing that Timberley was talking about.
Right.
Especially because, weren't you saying that every developer that's developed in Bratton Bros. has gone bankrupt? Just to get the money, Molly, add it.
Well, the, I mean, the only counterargument that I can think of right now is that it would chill, um, any motive, any motivated developer, perhaps, because they'd have to front the cash.
How much are we talking generally?
I mean, if it's a new road, it could be-
It could be significant.
Yeah, sewer lines and stuff, it could be significant money.
Yeah.
buried electrical.
So-
But you can get a surety, I mean, that's still, it's still serious money, but it's not as bad as a bond.
I mean, are we talking like 20% of the cost, or like 50% of the cost, generally?
It's up there.
Yeah.
It's not, I mean, I think 20 is low, I can't remember what we used to do in there.
Yeah, I think, I think somewhere between 35, 35 and 50 would be more reasonable. And then, you're talking serious money.
And, yeah, so I mean, if these people go bankrupt, then we're SLO.
So right now, we've got it.
I mean, that-
Right.
Yeah.
And then that's happened so many times, including out in Vermont, but then that's pretty-
It's happened here.
So the way this is written, it's going to be up to the DRB to decide how much, how much that is, right?
Well, we give them sort of a formula to operate with, so, I guess I wanted to introduce you to that concept, then get you thinking about it in the background, because it's going to come up again and again, not necessarily tonight, but-
Um, I think it's important to know what in here is new.
Oh.
Gosh, I didn't even look at the old one when I was writing the-
I would pretty much say-
I'm going to have to tell you in an email or something.
I would-
Well, if you could do that, that, I think, would be really helpful, because we're going to be faced with the same potential controversy
Yeah.
at every new item. We should know what these new items are.
Um, you know what I could do? I can leave notes in the next version of it, you know, so that you see it on the page, like, this is new, and how, kind of like a super common.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, I have a process question.
Yep, sure.
So, uh, so you know, most of the time that I've been on this board, we've been working on the town plan. So the procedures for something like this, that is not sort of town plan specific
Yep.
are we going to write something that we agree is good?
Mm-hmm.
And then, does it have, still have to go to the select board?
Yes.
Yes.
You liking that part?
We lack independence.
Yeah, yeah, and it'll go through the same rigorous review of grammar, um, at the select board that the town plan has got.
I don't know.
We're going to talk about this performance guarantee more.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I wanted to just flag it, because that is a significant difference with the existing one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And I would, I would say, you know, we're proposing it because it's more the norm, like in the rest of the country, and it addresses some pretty serious issues that we feel need to be addressed, in terms of, um, making sure that what the DRB is approving gets done. Because I think at this point, we're relatively clear, that sometimes the DRB is approving things, and then it doesn't get done, which is sort of the point that you were raising earlier, like, Timberley, but it doesn't get done, not because they're willfully breaking their own permit, it's just, this-
They run-
the pass, the passing of time, as much as anything else, and whoever finally does the act, has no relationship with the person that set off to do it in the first place.
Um, are we going to go over these nice subdivisions that you gave us plans for?
Yeah, that was my next question too. Not as this, but in the-
Are these like examples of something?
Oh dear, yeah.
The conservation.
Well, how late do you want to go to?
I, I was going to table the conservation subdivision discussion until our next meeting.
Okay.
Does anybody have any problem with that? Um, and is that, if that's what these are about, then?
Did, did you get enough out-
No.
Did you get enough out of this discussion of the procedures and stuff? Is that what, did you get what you were looking for, James?
I think so.
Yeah, how about other people? You okay with it?
I, the only thing that I would want would be to know what's new.
What's new.
What's new?
And, yeah, I mean, I can, I can annotate this, kind of. The, the subdivisions that you have in front of you, James, actually were to go to a conversation of, what do we want to require to be done on our subdivision, so it's another handout that we didn't pass out before. So, I don't know if that's something you want to start now.
I mean, is this just kind of like, A is a really crappy sketch that some guy did without even using graph paper, and B is a pretty good plan, and C is like a really detailed plan? And C is like a really detailed plan? Is that basically what we're...
Yes, kind of. A is kind of like, well, you could submit something like this, but what can you tell from it?
Right.
You know? Because I, if I was to tell you about this property, you might think, wow, I never would have gotten that from this sketch.
Right.
Um, and then B is kind of a, here is a minor subdivision, too lot, kind of with typical applica, you know, kind of what do we, what is a base do we want to see on a, for a minor subdivision? What do we think is enough information for a minor subdivision? We think this is a pretty good one.
Just acknowledging that it's an existing, built-out area and so therefore it's, um, details such as the contour lines are not necessarily critical. Oops. Sorry. Sorry. Oh, the fuzzing. All right. And then, and then the last one, C...
Is a major subdivision.
Is a major subdivision amongst other things. And, um, shows a series of features to do with the, um, landscape and, um, other regulatory, um, information that's crucial, including the, what we assume to be, um, wellhead...
Isolation.
Isolation.
Well and septic, actually.
Well, yeah, well and septic on a, for a property outside the area of development. Uh, so...
I think we should hold on to that one because there's a lot we can discuss about on that one, even when we talk about conservation subdivision, I think.
Right.
Um, and this was, this was just one sheet of this subdivision. You have this application. There was obviously the road profiles. There was an erosion control sheet as well, but...
Right. And then I guess, um, we, we can continue tonight if you want or not.
I was gonna kill it at 8:15. What do you guys want to do?
It sounds good.
Is that okay?
Sure. And then...
And my hope is at the next meeting that we'll have significantly closer to or a full draft, maybe a week before that we can read.
Okay.
And get into the nitty-gritty. Is that too much?
I feel like there's some more kind of conceptual issues that might be worth fleshing out before, before we hit you with a draft. It's one of those things, I mean...
Well, let's, let's, can we try to specify what the conceptual issues left for us to nail out before we can do a draft?
So does that mean that we're gonna discuss?
Yeah, I guess we discuss.
Okay. So we, we were enamored with the conservation subdivision approach for quite a while and we still are. And then, um, the document that I handed out from, I think I handed it out to some of them, yeah. It's, it's entitled Model Environmental Resource Area Protection Standards for Subdivisions. And so I guess we have sort of two contrasting approaches that we need to decide between. We can either continue on the road that we had, that we had sort of mentioned in the town plan and that we've been working on, at least in the back of our minds for a while. And this is, I have to say, this is mostly Sue's work, which is, you know, and it's good work. It's identifying conservation subdivisions as a type of subdivision with its own set of procedures and approaches that's entailed in that. Or an approach that she and I discussed today, because we both separately over a really long break, um, we're thinking about, well, what if we just took the key goals of the conservation subdivision and folded those into the standard subdivision procedure?
So that it can simplify.
Well, you know...
So that it's simpler.
Because when you were discussing the conservation subdivision last time, I know I felt, and I don't know about the rest of the board, that who would want to...
Do it differently.
Do it any other way.
Right. I think that that's...
Yeah, I mean, that's how I kind of felt like, we don't really have the development pressure.
Right.
If you're a...
And what is our, and what are we trying to preserve here in Brattleboro? And I think it's the environment. So those standards and maybe that way of doing a subdivision as, as looking at the features of the property first and justifying it. I think that's a great idea.
So, yeah, so the default should be a subdivision, a set of subdivision procedures that take seriously those things that we're attempting to achieve in the conservation subdivision. And then aspects of, um, development that are more associated with dimensional standards and, um, any kind of density bonus or density in general could be addressed through the issuance of a P R D or P U D permit as part of the subdivision process.
So we're gonna have subdivision regulations that distinguish between zoning zones? I mean...
Yeah. Yeah. Because P U Ds are only possible in some zoning districts as proposed in the current town plan normal.
Yeah, I'm just confirming that's how, how you do it. Yeah.
Yeah. We, you're okay?
Well, our current subdivisions don't address which, uh...
Which district.
Which dis, yeah, I said zone, but I meant district. And these will be different based on which district you're in.
No.
No.
Only if it's a P U D, which is altered district.
Oh, I assumed that it would also distinguish the conservation...
We had talked about doing that.
Right.
Um, but we're thinking now that the standards and the methodology for going about the subdivision are good.
Anyway.
Anyway.
Yeah.
And they're good everywhere. And if our priority is the environment...
And good quality, yeah, a good quality subdivision.
And good quality design.
Right.
Then those standards should be applied everywhere and, and looking at the features of the site first before just chopping it up.
Okay.
It's really just kind of an environmental...
Yes.
Front-ended subdivision.
Yeah. I think if you read through this, um, Model Environmental Resource Area Protection Standards for Subdivisions...
Which we just handed out to you.
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Which is a fairly new document too.
And really, really long.
But not really. I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I get it. Your explanation's sufficient. I just didn't realize that. I probably missed that at some point.
So...
So you want to continue this discussion about the subdivision requirements with the conservation into it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Or, well, if you want a draft of an entire subdivision regulations, I mean, this is kind of the conceptual discussion, like, yeah, that sounds good. I could see it in that direction and try to have a full draft.
I suspect we all agree on this. Is that right?
You probably, you might need to...
Tell me if I'm wrong. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the easiest thing to do...
I love hearing this.
We, I mean, just, you could just shoot us questions right now, so...
Well, I mean, if we all agree on this, I think it's up to you guys to give us something to read eventually. What I'm more interested is knowing the other things you need guidance on to get a full draft.
What I, my, my initial thought on this is if we strongly put in, just like with the town plan, if it goes in front of the select board and they say, "This is too prescriptive", we have to, I would like, I would like to deal with that objection before it happens.
Well, no, this is stuff where it has to be prescriptive because it's an ordinance. The plan is not an ordinance. And we're talking about stuff that would normally be the providence of the select board, like education and, you know, daycare and stuff. And I think that's why they take exception to it. And because they feel that even in the stuff that is somewhat under park control like land use, it puts them in a position where they'll have to approve it later because the town plan says it's what we're gonna do. I say not so, but that's their fear.
Okay.
But I mean, with ordinances, I don't think we have any other option but to make them prescriptive. And if the select board says they don't like them, they don't like them. But we can't, we can't have effective subdivision regulations unless we say, "You can't do that."
Yeah, we can't have effective, yeah.
And the D R B asked for clear regulations that they can base their judgments on.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, this is much more squarely in our and the staff's wheelhouse and expertise. So I think they'll be more deferential. I hope they'll be more deferential when we say, "You can't do that. You can do this."
Yeah.
This is our plan.
Yeah. And, and the, the way it would work, um, Jimmy, is if you look at the bottom of page three in this document, it lays out a five step...
In the model environmental?
Yeah. It lays out a five-step design process.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
And straight away, you'll, you'll see that some of those steps are not gonna apply for areas of town where it's already...
It's not gonna apply at B here.
It's not gonna apply to this one.
Sure.
If you're looking at B, it clearly doesn't really have much application because...
Yeah. This, this seems to apply more when there's a big honkin' open thing of land and...
Well, if you look and see, and you see a road going over a wetland and you see...
It might raise, it might raise some issues.
I mean, you can look at this one and say, boy, it could have been designed differently.
Right.
So here's what I'm thinking. At the next meeting, we discuss the specific things you feel you want guidance from us before you can do a draft. Then when we get a draft, hopefully at the meeting after that, we'll go through it and we'll have an opportunity to review each thing with specificity.
Yep.
And we can formally say, "This is what it's gonna look like." Or these are the changes we want. Or maybe we don't want to do that anymore now that we see what it looks like.
Yeah. So...
Does that sound...
Sounds great.
Does that sound great? Great.
Could we collapse it together and come with you, to you with a list of the conceptual issues that we need to be resolved as well as a draft?
I mean, that would be even better. Are you being sarcastic because this is too much?
I'm not being sarcastic.
But, but I would...
No, I wasn't. I wasn't being sarcastic.
Also like, not only a list of...
We could do more. We should do more.
The list of proposed new items and changes.
Yes. Yes. Sort of a before and after.
Yeah, so we know what, what's new ground that might be questioned.
I have a feeling...
And I think, I, I think just as sort of a, a general remark, I'm glad Liz keeps on bringing this up because I think one of the things that I personally wasn't necessarily prepared for was that, um, there'd be members of the select board with a background in D I B decision-making who have the, um, these responses, um, acknowledging that the existing suite of land use regulations are outdated and problematic. But, um, but the suggested changes, because they are actually significant changes, are problematic because they're, well, significant changes. So, um, it's sort of, that one I wasn't necessarily prepared for. But I think we need to spend more time with that issue of how to, um, encourage the select board to embrace the change, if you like, for want of a better term.
I just don't want to write a plan predicting, I don't want to write it for the critics that we're trying to predict.
No, I agree.
And, you know, if they send it back, we can make changes and try again.
Yep.
We're making changes for the general welfare of the town.
Right. I just, I mean, if there's something we believe in and we think it's gonna be unpopular, then let's lose on what we think is the best product.
Right.
And if, if we lose, then we'll, you know, concede that and, and give something that doesn't have the controversial issue.
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think, I think that's similar to our experience with fluvial erosion hazard. The planning commission believed in it the first time and still believes in it and...
But I mean, that's different in a way because you know that there's gonna be new subdivision regulations at some point. We know that. And we know that it has to happen.
Yep.
The fluvial erosion hazard overlay is an optional thing we think is best.
Yes.
And we want to try again because Irene happened really. But these, I say, since we know we're gonna do it, we ought to aim high.
Yep.
Go for it.
If we get too close to the sun, come back down.
Everything's melting?
Right.
So, uh, before we break, can I ask one question? So is, is the procedure with the town plan, we're gonna present these things in the schedule that's listed, we're gonna get all their feedback, then are we gonna come back here and all at once look at all the feedback and decide what we do?
Do you mean town plan?
Town plan, yeah.
If there are minor changes, they can just make them without sending it back to us and they have that authority.
Well, though, I think they said that they would, even if they were wording changes, that they would give it to us to reword, even if they're minor.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna object strongly to that and I'm hoping that that doesn't happen.
Okay.
And if there's a major change, it'll come back to us. And then we have to go through two public meetings. I'm, sorry.
Not necessarily. A major change should...
A major change would have to go through two public hearings. They could, they could send us...
They could send it back to the planning commission. I think for minor changes, just because they don't want to make the wording changes, they would rather the planning commission and then you could give it back to them.
Yeah.
And I would, you know...
That, that's not a bad one. That's not a bad choice.
I don't like that choice.
Well, I like it because we're writing it and we're writing it.
I don't like it for, that's not the reason I don't like it.
Okay.
Okay.
And that ends my commentary. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Any motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Everyone is satisfied? Any more questions? All those in favor?
Right.
All those opposed?